School Board meeting. We'll begin with a flag salute by trustee Ron Swirzik.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Thank you. We'll move on to item two, adoption of the agenda as submitted for possible action.
So.
Second.
Motion by trustee Swirzik, seconded by trustee Walker. Do we have any further discussion or public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Agenda item three, superintendent's report for information only, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, with your permission, I'd like to go to the speaker's podium and Earlier this summer, we had, as you know, the retirement of Janice Arthur Towns, who had been our Director of Technology for 20 years. And after her resignation, we posted the position. We went through the interview process. And it's my pleasure to introduce to you tonight our new Director of Technology and Innovation. I'd like to introduce Mr. Raymond Maderos. So Raymond has been with our district for 15 years. He previously, to being named our new director, has worked as in a number of positions, but most recently as our network technician. We're really pleased with the skill set and the expertise that Raymond brings to the job. He's a great people person, has an intimate understanding of our network and our technology processes. He's been through all aspects of our one-to-one mobile device rollout and obviously is has been part of the discussions from the word go when it comes to, you know, what are the steps that we need to take within our school district? How do we stay on that cutting edge? And wanted to have him here tonight. I know that he's been in front of the board in other times, but I wanted to make sure that you knew who Raymond was, if you happened to hear us talk about him, or if he's here to present. So I'd like to provide a few moments for Raymond to address the board, if he'd like, and for you to ask any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, for the introduction. So I've worked with some of you guys on various different projects. And so some of you know me, and for those of you that don't, as Mr. Stokes said, I've been with the district for 15 years as various different positions, all within IT. Most recently, it was the network engineer position. And that was, you know, it's been a great honor, privilege, and challenge to be in that position with the one-to-one rollout and the standardized state testing and trying to get all of those students testing simultaneously and reliably on our systems. That has been a great challenge, but I think we're doing pretty good there. And I just really look forward to working with all the great folks in the Carson City School District, all of our stakeholders, and doing my part in what I can do to make the district better in technology, listening to staff feedback and turning that into action and that sort of thing. So I don't know if you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Maderos. Do you have any questions? Trustees Swirzik.
Hey, first of all, welcome and congratulations on this.
Thank you.
When Richard was talking about steps in technology, what do you see as the next step in technology for the Carson City School District and how we're going to get there?
I feel like the next step in order to move us beyond the plateau we're kind of at now is to really address the technology literacy gap in our teachers and really get those skill levels up to where they're comfortable using the technology and can apply it effectively. I think that's going to be where our focus is this year, as well as fixing things that are broken in our current system, at various different systems, and getting those more efficient, more effective for our staff members. Try to reduce data redundancy input, those types of things that consume a lot of people's time unnecessarily.
Trustee Walker.
I just want to say congratulations formally, and I know you're going to do a great job in this position.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I could add just one little bit, the original position that was held by Mrs. Arthur Towns was Director of Technology. We jazzed that up a little bit, and this position is considered as the Director of Technology and Innovation. And next steps, as we have talked about this, would be to really merge the tools, the materials, the resources, all of the slick things that are coming out in education that are being sold by vendors, all of those electronic components, having those in the hands of the teacher, but then merging that technology piece and the informational piece. And that will be a big part of what I see Raymond helping us do. So grateful for him and for his expertise. Is it all right if I just stay here? Carry on with my report. I just wanted to let you know, because we always do this at the start of every school year, we're always interested, hey, are we growing? Are we shrinking? How are we looking? Obviously, you folks know that our funding hinges around how many students we have in the classrooms, and this year's a little confusing for me. So I did not compare our current counts to last year's current counts. What I did is I took the numbers that existed from June. So in other words, how many kids did we have in our schools in June and how many kids do we have in the first couple of days in August? And I'm hoping that that might give us a little better perspective. But to give you an example, I guess the easiest number to remember right now is that right after today's count, we have 26 fewer students today than we did in June, when the last day of school hit. So I am looking at your faces, and you're kind of wrinkling up your foreheads a little bit and wondering, how is that possible? Well, I'm not quite sure. But I can tell you that if you remember at this time last year, we were just rolling out Infinite Campus, and there were a ton of questions and mistakes, and we had duplicate students entered at duplicate sites. We think we're past some of that, but not all of that. And so I want you to know that as we talk about these numbers early in the school year, there's always some error. There are, you should just expect that these numbers are going to change daily until we hit that, at least that 10 days of school. Because after 10 days, what happens is, according to the rules of attendance, any student that hasn't been at school, we're instructed to take off of the rolls. So right now, we have new students who have moved to town. We also have students that are not attending school because they likely moved someplace else, but they haven't had their names withdrawn from our school records. So to give you a few more perspectives from just this recent two days, it appears that as I look and compare current numbers to last June, there is a decrease of 109 students at the elementary level. Now, that doesn't mean that that number is across the board, because we have seen larger numbers at in kindergarten at both Borderwick Bray and Fremont. So we're already starting to take some steps towards alleviating those numbers. But it's interesting that, you know, if you think about young people and young families moving to town, they typically have younger kids, but we actually have a decrease today of 109 students. At the middle school, we're seeing an increase at the middle school level, because this is at both sites, we're seeing an increase of 36 students. And at the high school level, we're seeing an increase of 47 students. So the net gain or loss from June of last year is 26 students. So I'll keep watching the numbers. I'll keep sending those out to you as I learn more. We are taking some steps where we have larger-than-anticipated numbers, trying to put long-term subs there so the students are being serviced and are being supervised and taught in these early days.
Just a question about Carson Middle School, because I received the phone call from Mr. Sadler, like many of the other parents did. Did they have almost 200 new students come? Or did it?
They have 86, according to my count.
Okay.
So there's a bigger number of students at Carson Middle School. Again, that number could increase and decrease as we figure out all of the students that are in the system or out of the system.
Mr. Stokes, if you could, so if I heard you correctly, so there's a net increase of 36 students at the middle school level?
Yes.
But we're reporting 80-something at Carson Middle School, so is that saying there's 50 kids that haven't shown up yet? Is that how you're kind of parsing that out?
Yes, yes. And remember that these numbers that I'm giving are across the district, not overly specific at one particular site. And so there will be a little movement in both places. Okay?
Do we have any other questions?
Madam President, that's my report.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and move on to agenda item four, board reports and board member comments for information only. We'll begin with the Pioneer High School representative, Sienna.
Thank you, members of the board. Pioneer students and staff would like to welcome everyone back for another great year at school. All students who are interested in the annual Rock Creek trip with Project Discovery need to sign up with Mr. Jordan or Mr. Elijah. The PHS Open House will be Tuesday, September 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., when teachers will be highlighting class activities planned for this year. All PHS students will be receiving their laptops starting the beginning of next week. We would like to welcome to the Pioneer family two new teachers, Mr. Zach Logan and Ms. Cheyenne Corley. Thank you. This concludes the activities, events, and announcements for Pioneer High School.
Thank you for your report. Trustee Karini.
Mrs. Zona, the principal of Seligur Elementary School, would like to announce an open house, actually this Thursday, August 24th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. And going along the lines of Mr. Sadler's announcement, he also talked about, well, anyway, last week, we went to, I have a child at Carson Middle, we went to the back-to-school sneak preview on Thursday, very well organized. Mr. Sadler talked about some scheduling issues. We also had a scheduling issue. All the counselors were there, the lines were long. However, they fixed everything, at least for my son, before Monday. So they did a nice job.
Thank you, trustee.
Sure. Just real short, I just had a brief opportunity to chat with some of the honors and AP kids, really before school started. And as you would imagine, some of the kids were pretty well organized and had their summer package done. Others on Saturday were still pumping them out. But they were all pretty excited to get back to school, you know, they kind of have the old gosh schools here, but they really were kind of excited to start the school year, which was nice to hear. And the Jump Start kids that I spoke to, probably about six of them, they're wrapping up their third week of that advanced class before the semester starts, and so far, it sounds like everybody's doing pretty well. So, you know, given the short poll of, the small poll I took, it sounds like we're off to a good start.
Thank you. Trustee Walker.
So I wanted to say, I saw quite a few clips of Mrs. Reed from Seligur Elementary School in her class, learning about the solar eclipse and, you know, day one, and I know she's a phenomenal teacher, but I thought that that was pretty impressive, so I enjoyed seeing that. Fremont Elementary School is going to have a PTA Fun Night this Thursday, August 24th, at 5:30. They will also have a Parent Night next Tuesday, August 29th, at 5:30. And the purpose of that meeting will be to review the Title I requirements for the school. They are reporting that they've had a successful first two days of school and lots of new students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Swirzik.
Yes, I'd just like to report on two things. I attended the open house of the pre-K at the Boys and Girls Club. I just want, I wanted to go there to see how the parents would take this of having a classroom, not in a school, but in a, in this kind of, or in the Boys and Girls facility. It was, there was nothing but excitement, and the kids loved it. So I just want to give some kudos to Laura Austin and how she set this up and the new teacher. It was good. And Richard was there, and Don was there, so it was a, it was a good, a real good turnout, so. And then I want to talk a little bit about what happened the next day, and that was the speaker from Canada talking to all the teachers. And it was, it was interesting. It's kind of like a lot of things that we're doing, and remember when Steve Brader came here, Dr. Brader came here and talked about student-teacher partnerships? And he talked a lot about the relationships of how to engage students in that relationship. He talked about with expectations, to take the anxiety away from learning by unit, you know, the kids or students should be told what to, what to expect. And so I'm going, well, this sounds like we're kind of like in the same ballpark, going to the same place, you know, like with the learning guides. And he talked about how to, no, a way of, that he's approached grading, which was, which was just kind of interesting, like, you know, let the kids grade themselves. And like, we have a self-assessment in our learning guides, but again, he would either agree or disagree with what the kids put down, you know? So it was kind of interesting. And then he talked about the curriculum as far as knowledge, you know, versus competencies, and he, and all of this was, so you have to have both, because we talk about real-life experiences, this is where it's at. And it's kind of like just what we're doing. But I observed, all the teachers were right into it, and it was like, yeah, we're all going down the same path. And I was, I was just kind of excited, so I'd like to share that with you. And Richard, was it Dan Sadler that recommended the speaker?
When Dan first became our principal, like all good principals, he had lots of ideas. And this was one that seemed to rise to the top. And early on in his work, he met, actually sought out, this young man who was starting to make a name for himself, and made an acquaintance, and turned into a professional relationship. And over time, as our system progressed and got to where we are now, it just seemed like timing was, was right on the mark to have him come. And he was very inspiring and spoke with our staff. And I heard great comments from staff members who were pleased to be able to come together in a venue like that and to hear a professional topic. And I think we're headed again in a great direction. And like you mentioned, trustee Swirzik, we're in a great place to embrace some of those conditions.
Well, then, a great big thank you to Dan Sadler for making this happen, because it was all, it was well worth it.
Thank you. Trustee Wilkie.
I just got back from the National School Board Association's Leadership Seminar in Chicago. Got a lot of good information. Right now, the big push nationally and in our PAC region is the equity versus equal. It's a theme that they're, they're really going after, and I think in Nevada, we lacked using that in our policy. So it's something that we're going to look at as an association and as, I think, this board. We had some really good speakers. We had Kevin Powell, who talked about overcoming poverty through education. We had a guy that was a memory expert that is in the Guinness Book of Records for being able to write with both hands upside down and sideways. So that was one my family was really hoping keyed on, because my memory is terrible. We put on our website, the Nevada School Board Associations, we put out the NASB new PSA videos that are going up about standing up for publication, public education. Both of them are really good, if you get a chance to go look at that. They gave us their copy of their Avicci Agenda, if you guys want to look at that. And then Lifting the Lamp beside the school doors, Schoolhouse Doors, A Legal Guide to Serving Undocumented Students in Public Schools. And I have a note in here for Renee to make you a copy, Mr. Pavlakis, because there's a lot of good things from a lot of, that people are doing around the states already, so that we don't have to duplicate anything if we don't have to. And then our Vegas meeting for NASB will be in Vegas, September 15th and 16th. Please let me know if you have any thing to put in there. Oh, and then I was the representative from Nevada on the nominating committee for the PAC region rep to put one of those PAC region people, there's eight states, on the National Board of Directors. So that was really interesting, and got to meet the past president of the National School Board, Miranda Beardman, and she's just amazing. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'll just begin off, begin by thanking Mrs. Kima for having the foresight to order all of the glasses for the solar eclipse. My elementary kids came home thrilled to death, and I think that was a great, I heard there were some difficulties with the shipping, and I'm glad everything worked out and they all got there in time. So thank her for that. For Fritsch Elementary School, tomorrow night is their Open House, back to school from 5:00 to 5:30. Kindergarten, parents can meet with their kindergarten teacher in the classroom from 5:30 to 6:00. The other grades can meet with their teachers in their classrooms. And then from 6:00 to 7:00, the PTA will be doing an ice cream social as well. And that concludes my report. Go ahead and move on to agenda item five, association reports. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, administration. My name's Loretta Marson. I'm the VP for CESA. I'd just like to say welcome back to everybody. Well, it's that time of year when the classifieds get to go play at Wild Waters, and also the certified's get to go. If you're a DUES playing member, you can sign up, and it's Saturday, September 9th, and it's from 10:00 to 7:00. And with that, you get everything at Wild Waters, golfing, the go-karts, all the stuff is free, and you get to eat all day, okay? That's the best part. I always call it my Caddyshack Day, because we're just go crazy. The cost is $15 for the first 10 people, and after that, it's 15, no, it's $20, and it can, you can have 15 people, okay? If you'd like to go, please RSVP Terry Cantley. She is at Transportation, and everyone should have received an email who is a classified person in the district. I will not give out her phone number, so you can look that up or get in touch with Terry at the Transportation. And let's see, you get your food, you get your drinks, and that is from 10:30 to 4:30. So it's a really enjoyable day, and so we have a great time. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. Okay, we'll go ahead. Are there any other? I don't see Mr. Walker, or Mr.?
Wallace.
Yeah, I can't remember his last name, starts with a W. We'll go ahead and move on to agenda item six, public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening?
So you need that member's.
We have none. We'll go ahead and move on to agenda item seven, which is Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Newly Proposed Carson City School District Policy 275, School Social Workers' Safe School Professionals Program. Second reading for possible action, Mr. Dave Calerio.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Carson City School District Administration. For the record, Dave Calerio, and I am the School District School Social Worker or Safe School Professional Program Manager. I know it's kind of a mouthful. Thank you for allowing me to have the second presentation of our policy 275. At our presentation, our first reading, two weeks ago, Mrs. Kima and I had presented, and you all made several suggestions, which we have incorporated. In the second paragraph, we've changed the word "children" to "students." And then there was a concern that the third paragraph was kind of a run-on, and what we did was, we added several commas to break that up a little bit. So I will entertain any questions or comments?
I just have a couple of comments on that third paragraph, because you did actually make a comma splice. So what I would do is first delete the apostrophe for SSPs and just make it plural. And then rather than have it be such a long sentence, I would end it right after, SSPs will concentrate on students' academic, behavioral, and emotional needs, and I'd make a period, and then just say, they will also provide services, support advocacy, and resources. And then you don't need that, the red, the second comma that's red, that could be deleted, and then it all reads.
Okay.
That's what I'd do.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, I reread, you know, the entire policy. This is, this is a pretty powerful policy that was, when we as trustees are supporting this. And you, are you going to be around for the later agenda item on the?
I absolutely can be. I absolutely can be.
You know, you, this policy, you know, means a lot as far as your role, you know, in assisting students who might not have that sense of belonging, or maybe have lost hope, in many ways, and you've already, the social workers have come forward with just stories of what they've experienced. And I just think as we go through, I don't know how much you've tracked on this, or the entire tracking process since they begun, but there's got to be a value placed on this for students and families and that, this role that you play. So I just, you know, wanted to pass, pass that along, that this thing is going to go a long ways, you know? And again, it's back to student achievement and success in life, and you're, you're right on target here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Swirzik. We are waiting and working with the Nevada Department of Education, based on the three tiers that we have and what we're putting in Infinite Campus. They can break out dropdowns by each of the three tiers, and then there's between 10 to 15 service interventions or support programs, or I guess interventions for a better sake of the word. And that those, a lot of the data will be tracked on that to show what they're doing. Currently, they're doing it by hand and then submitting it to the Department of Education on a monthly basis. But we're hoping that once they have that piece set up for us in Infinite Campus, we'll be able to track that and then be able to establish goals and objectives. For example, maybe fewer incidences of bullying reported, you know, more students, maybe better achievement scholastically and academically, some of those things. And we could certainly come back to you, and you can help us with that, or we could kind of present what we're doing. But right now, I know they wanted to have the baseline of all those three tiers, what the interventions are, showing what they're doing and the value, and then key on some of these things here. And you're right, it is, we're confident going forward, but we're also realistic. We know that the first year was kind of a trial and error to track the program and kind of get it going, but now we're into our second year, and we're going to continue to grow it. So I do appreciate your comments.
Do we have any other further discussion or comments? Mr. Swirzik?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt newly proposed CCSD Policy 275, School Social Workers' Safe School Professionals, as presented and approved August 22nd, 2017, as the adopted date.
Motion by trustee Swirzik, seconded by trustee Cassioppo. Do we have any other further discussion or questions? Do we have any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very, very much for your support. Thank you very, very much for your support. And if I could just add one other thing, I know we're not voting on the regulation, but we also adopted the Board's recommendations on our, the regulation part, that we will work to include more peer-to-peer type programs, that we will also look at small group peer-to-peer activities and intervention. And then we added one at the very end because we want to promote the social and emotional learning. So we did add at the end of the regulation that we, that our social workers will follow incorporate district-approved and adaptive social and emotional learning standards and guidelines, that we make sure we move in the right direction. So thank you for allowing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 8, Informational Update from the Transportation Department describing the current levels of service in the Carson City School District for discussion only. Sherry Fletcher. Sheree. Didn't give me that. Here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Stokes, for having me come speak to you guys. So I am the Transportation Supervisor. I've been in the department, in the Transportation Department, for going on 20 years, and this is going on my third year as the Transportation Supervisor. Currently in our fleet, we have 45 buses in our fleet, which 31 routes are driven daily. And of those 31 routes, 10 of them are special needs buses, which are special needs buses and aides, drivers and aides. So we have currently this year, we had to post a new run for Gate Run. I'm not sure if people are familiar with that. That's for the middle school. Eagle Valley students have to have a pass, and they have to go to Carson Middle. There's approximately 23 to 24 students. We've only seen about seven of them ride the bus so far, just the first two days. And also, I put in a request for a new special needs bus because of the population for Fritsch Elementary. So we have three open routes right now. Some stats here, we have average from last year, we had 2,000 students transported daily. The average on a route is about 56. And we have student, we have early childhoods, special needs, and I also work with McKinney-Vento, Students in Transition with Peggy Sweetland. And we try to place those students on a regular route bus, if at all possible, but there are some cases where we have to place them on a special needs bus because in their home school. So we've taken those students to Austin's house. Currently, we have two students that go to Carson Middle that are at Austin's house, and we transport one way. So Douglas County takes them in in the morning, and we return them to Austin's house. We've also had Jack's Valley in the past few years, but there's a lot of students that come in and out of the Gibson and Center, that home for advocates, and the hotels, the motels around Carson City area. So a little bit of background on that. We have a two-mile walk zone for Carson High School and Carson Middle, or, and middle school students, and we also have a one-mile for the walk zone for the elementary students. This past summer, we had a lot of summer school routes. I don't think I ever had a break. None of the drivers, they worked from the day they got out of regular school to probably two weeks prior to school starting. We have the Read by Three programs, which were all the elementary schools and all of our drivers, they just, you know, they love to, that extra little bit of money helps, so they all applied. So we had all of our drivers driving this summer, which is great. We had, and then the summertime, myself included, I am a driver trainer, and I have a driver trainer as well. And so we do retraining of all of our route drivers in the summer. We do a refresher course with them. And we are currently training one new driver. We just hired a driver, and she passed her test today, so yay. And then we are currently training one driver, and we still need more drivers. We need two drivers and an aide. So I think that's it. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Trustee Swartzick?
I do. With all of the students you're transporting, and let's go back to just the last year.
Okay.
Have you had many discipline problems?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's not overwhelming, but yes, we do.
Okay, how do you handle that? Do you have an orientation when the kids first get, like, you're starting out this year?
Right.
Do you talk to them before?
Yeah, what usually happens, we have our rules, and that usually, they're online now. They used to come home in the packets and the peachies and open house. We do have the set of rules at the middle schools at the table when they get their bus route. If they ride a bus, then they have their rules. Here you go, here's your set of rules. So usually at the school, they get either through the teachers or online, when they register their student, they are issued the rules, what's required of them. But we do have a disciplinary process, the white slip process. The first one is a warning, and usually we warn the kids like a lot, okay? We warn them probably up till May, and then, you know, the last month, okay, you're off, right? Okay, so we give them, there's a three-strike, you're out. So the first one is a warning, and that's just a verbal, okay, we try to move the student up, whatever their disciplinary problem, you know, move them up front, call the parent, they sign the little white slip. Okay, your student Johnny was in the aisle, or he didn't listen, he was, you know, sticking his hand out the window, and the parent signs that, brings it back to us. So that's the process. That's number one. Then number two, say for instance, they did something more drastic, if they're fighting, that's an automatic 10 days off all buses. And the second one is a five-day off. So they get five days off, they have their parents, you know, they have to walk. Then the third one is off all buses for the remainder of the year. Now, I work with a lot of parents because it's a hardship, and let me tell you, I've given them, you know, chance after chance. We put them even on a special needs bus if need be for these little ones, especially the little ones. But when you're a big kid and you're, you don't listen, then you're off. You're off all the buses. You can walk, I'm sorry, you can walk 2.2 miles. Anyway, but that's our process, and we, the schools, they get the copies. We have video, we have audio and video. We've shown like the hard drives up to the schools, hey, this is so-and-so. We have the police that are on campus, the, you know, the SROs. Yeah, and, you know, they come out and they say, hey, this kid graffitied a hole in the back of the seat, and we caught him on camera, he stuck his head right into it. So right into the seat. So anyway, you know, we catch them, and they don't think that they, you know, that there's any consequences, but yes, there are. And their parents are held liable to pay for the damage if it's, you know, graffiti or vandalism. So did that answer your question?
Do we have any ability to, well, I guess we do, but do we track kids who are suspended from the bus?
Oh, yeah.
Do we have the ability to track whether or not those kids during that time of suspension go to school, or do they tend to stay home?
Well, the parents would have to transport them, and that's why I said, I work with a lot of them, I do, you know, I try not, they try not to kick them off the bus, but if it's a hardship, we'll put them on a special needs bus if need be. But the schools are responsible, hey, this kid's missing too much, too much school, we need to do something, so I'll work with them. You know, they'll do in-school suspension, or, you know, half-day or one, you know, give them a ride in the morning, figure something out in the afternoon. So, yeah, we have, we make it all happen. Anything else?
I'd just like to reiterate, that's true. I have known several parents that have been at wit's sense with their kids and their behavior, and your department has worked really well with them to try to get them back on track and get them back on the bus. And if it was a truly dire problem, you've really went above and beyond it. So I wanted to thank you for that and taking, you know, looking at other circumstances that might have been a part of it and putting that into the factor, and it's not just black and white. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you, too, on another note. I know the bus drivers, and I'd like to just extend it to them.
Okay.
You know, after-school programs, I've been involved in cross-country and track, and I know it's challenging sometimes to get a bus there on time, but we always get a bus there to take the kids to a variety of places throughout the city to expose them to, you know, different places to run.
Right.
And, you know, it's difficult, and the bus drivers are always good-natured about it, and a lot of times, they're very flexible, where do you want to go? And I just wanted to say thank you for that because it really means a lot, and it keeps the kids interested.
Right, I'll pass that on to them.
I just have a question with the pre-K program. How has that impacted the busing?
Oh, my gosh. Well, yeah, that was a topic there. They don't start till next Monday. Now, with the early childhood and pre-K, they were going just four days a week now, and then they were going from in the morning, and then a midday, and then a 3:00 in the afternoon. Now they're going 8:30 to 11:00, 11:00 to 1:30, and then we have a midday in the middle, and then, oh, and then the 1:30, they take them home. And then we have pre-K that goes all day from 8:30 to 1:30. So all of the pre-K, they're at every school except Seiliger and Fritsch, but they also have them at the Boys and Girls Club now. So with that, the midday isn't a problem, but we have a lot of students now that are kind of overflowing, our buses in the morning, not overflowing, but they're packed. And I have one route right now that, he's rolling out at 6:30 in the morning to pick up elementary students, Fremont and Seiliger. So I'm doing the, we're doing the best we can in our department to get all these kids to school on time, and just logistics, we go to King's Canyon, Timberline, out to, you know, Upgonai, clear down the racetrack. I mean, they're all over the place. So, you know, with what we have, you know, that adds a good 20, 25 minutes to a route, and these are littles, so, but...
So looking at that, is there something that we should be looking at budget-wise in the next budget because of this increase in that? I know we had the college program, we had the Jump Start, and then we've got pre-K, and we've been adding and adding. Is there something that we need to look at as a board financially that would?
Jump Start is not a problem because we take them with one of our buses that we have to Pioneer High School, and then we go up to the colleges, only a handful of students. And we do currently transport two students that are in the early morning. They go to the high school for geometry, and then they go to Carson Middle, those two students, but that's, but pre-K, AJ, we need more buses. We need more buses. We have one bus on order for special needs because we're running out of spares, you know, with the buses that we need wheelchair lifts, so...
So how many buses would you be comfortable with?
10 more. A whole new fleet.
I like how you think, Sherry. I mean, if you're going to ask, ask.
Right, you know, 10 more, what the heck. Five. We have, we have, our fleet is old. I mean, they're as old as I am. No, they're 28.
It was on the budget for several years, and it kept getting slid back.
1998s are our spare buses, 1998s. We have a couple that are like a 95, a 96, but our newest buses, the majority of them are 2005s. We have a couple of newer ones, 2012, but, but we need some special needs buses, and we do have one on order, I believe Mitch is ordering one, right? You didn't know? Okay, yeah. He's like, whatever, write you a check. But, yeah, we do need, we do need, I'm going to say five at least, but we need drivers.
Yeah, that's the other thing, because I know that I'm the...
Employees. And we had one quit like two days before school started.
Right. I know, and that was a national theme where I was this weekend, was not only is it teachers, but the bus drivers is the next critical shortage.
Yes, it's always, but this is the worst year, starting out, I mean, even though we're surviving, but it's the worst shortage-wise and all the routes and the kids, but, you know, we make it work and just, you know, on the phone, on the radio. So, yeah, five more buses, AJ.
Poof.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know, so in the last two years within the budget, kind of the standard practice now is we, we put in the transportation budget, it's $135,000 each year for a bus. So that, the idea is that that money is there to pay for a bus if need be. Transportation also helps take care of other vehicles within the district as well, so as they see needs around the district, they can help fulfill some of that. So if, if we do look at five more buses or whatever it may be, when we do, when we do the December amended budget, if that was something we, you know, we put together some what the needs really are, if that were when you wanted to say, you know, we want to provide this, that would be a time, otherwise it would have to wait until the next year. But there's opportunity there if we need that.
Thank you.
Just one question, and Sherry, not tonight.
Sheree, yeah, thank you.
Not tonight, but maybe a future agenda item. Would you come back and make a presentation on the pros and cons of seat belts, restraints, and buses?
Okay.
And it's a serious issue, you know, for kids and for students, the safety.
Okay, will do.
And I just wanted to thank you, and the other thought that I had, which it doesn't, it's still kind of up in the air what the growth is at Carson Middle School, but I'm concerned about if they do have a significant increase in growth, will that affect the number of kids on each route anyway, once you figure out where they all live? But then I just wanted to thank you because I've been sending my kids on the bus since they started, and they've had fabulous bus drivers. Mr. Castro in particular is really, for an elementary school bus driver, he knows every kid by name, and he keeps track of them all. So I just really appreciate it because I know they care about those kids that they pick up and where they, where they get them to.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to...
Madam President, before we go, could I just say thanks to the Transportation Department? I know that they attend all of the open houses and back-to-school nights, and so, Mr. Swartzick, to answer your question, there's staff members from the Transportation Department there with the routes and information to answer questions and to help provide information to our community members. So thanks, Sheree.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 9, Informational Update on Activities Associated with the Safety Services Department, including facility updates and staff training for discussion only. Ann Seer.
Thank you, President Crossman, members of the trustees, members and staff and members of the public here. So I have been asked to just give you all kind of a brief update on all of the activities of my department that occur over the summer months. While everyone is away, it's a very busy time of year for us. A lot of inspections and safety measures are undertaken during the summer months when the buildings are empty, so it's a very busy time of year for us. So I've prepared a presentation for you. I'm calling it "The Summer of Safety." Just briefly, I think most of you are aware of the fact that the Safety Services Department is a non-academic service department that promotes and supports a safe and healthy school or district environment by offering safety advice and guidance, providing diversified safety training. Some of that I'll be talking about in this presentation. And then also establishing, managing, and promoting district-wide environmental health and safety policies and procedures, one of which is our Emergency Operations Plan. So overall, our mission is to establish a safe environment for the students, the staff, and our overall community. It's our goal to create an atmosphere for achievement by instilling confidence in the safety of our schools. So that's what we're all about in the Safety Services Department. We take that pretty seriously. We don't like to regard ourselves as some outside unit that's just responsible for compliance and telling everybody no. So, and along those lines, we also like to be mindful of how we connect to the school district's objectives with social, emotional learning. You'll note that part of that social, emotional learning objective includes your school-wide practices and policies and your family and community partnerships. So my department is very much involved with those district-wide practices and policies that instill a sense of safety and security and also in working with our community partnerships, whether that be our SRO program or our local emergency planning committee, Ron Wood, the Fire Department, various social service agencies that support our families and help instill that sense of security in our schools. So that's how we like to see ourselves fitting in there. So talking about this summer, we had a lot on our plates this summer. You are all aware of the fact that we installed a new video surveillance system, and that was complete this week. We're doing the final punch lists on that. All schools have their new video systems. We have a lot of annual jurisdictional safety inspections that are conducted towards the end of the summer. We start doing all of our new hire training. We have all of our site safety teams that are forming at the beginning of the school We have all of our site safety teams that are forming at the beginning of the school year, and we like to have lots of supports, materials that we can give to them to get started on the, on the right path at the beginning of the school year. We have just finished implementing a new CPR training program district-wide. And then, of course, we also updated the Emergency Operations Plan, and we just completed a couple of days of training on that for all of the administrators and all the new So I'm just gonna kind of touch on some of these things. The video surveillance system, you know, I just like to briefly touch on some of the values of that, that project because it was a very high-dollar ticket item, and any time we spend that kind of money on something that isn't directly tied to, you know, achievement and serving the, the mission of the school district, I think we all kind of have to wonder, boy, that was a lot of money. But, but I do believe it helps tie into that, that goal of making folks feel safe and secure. We can reduce costs and risk. The surveillance systems are known to lower risks and help prevent incidents from occurring such as burglary and fire and vandalism. We can prevent and deter crime. Criminals are just not as likely to target buildings that have cameras and surveillance systems on them. We can increase parental and student confidence. Those provide a sense of security. We can encourage good behavior. Surveillance systems encourage students and employees to be on their best behavior. And I think you just heard Sherri talking about the system that we have on the school buses, and it's known to work. You can really prevent a lot of those he-said, she-said type interactions when you have video footage. Preventing safety incidents, I'm really excited this winter to see how this might help us in terms of just monitoring like snow and ice conditions, to be able to get on, take a look at our entryways, and, and take a quick inventory of where we might need a little extra attention. So that's also a benefit. And then, of course, assisting our law enforcement partners. They use this footage to identify and prosecute criminals and conduct investigations, and oftentimes they request that footage from us. So it's, it's a good system to have, and I think overall, over time, it will prove its value out. The system, which I presented to you several months ago, the, the name of the software is called Genetek. And just, just keeping in mind that as time goes by, this is a, more of a multi-system security platform. It's not just a surveillance system. The software has the ability to manage access control and our intrusion alarm system. So you can put that all on one platform and look at, say, for instance, a floor plan map on a, on a laptop and see where the intrusion alarm is sounding, see through access controls, electronic monitoring on doors, which doors are being opened. And you can also take security measures electronically and lock doors down and open up schools with a system like this. So that's all something that is available to us out in the future. This is an example of what we have at every one of our schools, the secured single point of entry, and we now have a crystal-clear camera image of everyone who is approaching our front entrances. So that's just one image I wanted to share with you. And you'll notice on the left and on the right, this is the actual software screen. So you have the list of cameras on the left, and then your camera controls on the right. It's a very intuitive software system, very easy to use. Most of the principals have already been trained in it and find it easy to use. This is an example of what a multi-camera display would look like on the desktop. These are various hallways at the high school on the second floor, and you can see just how crisp these images are. This is the football field, and this camera, it's kind of hard to tell from this shot, but this is actually a 4K wide-angle camera, and it's, it's three cameras inside of one lens. And so as you pan out, the shot becomes wider and wider, and then you can also zoom in, and the clarity that you can achieve on facial recognition in the bleachers all the way across the field from a camera that's mounted on the announcer's booth is just, it's pretty It's, it's mounted up on our media station.
Did you let Douglas know about that?
Yeah. Well, there, you're gonna love this one. This, this is a camera that is the front driveway of the high school. This is a PTZ camera, meaning it's always on tour. It's a pan tilt zoom. And we can actually, if you look at that sea up on the hillside, way up, up in the, you know, upper right-hand corner, the Carson Sea on the hill, this camera can actually zoom in on that sea. That's like over a mile away. So this camera can grab car, cars on eye, I mean, it's, yeah, it's pretty, pretty incredible. So it, it was quite an investment, this surveillance system project, but I think we can feel pretty confident that we got a state-of-the-art system that's, that's going to last us for a number of years. I mean, I don't know what number of years is anymore when we're talking about technology products, but hopefully it won't be eighteen months. So, right. Okay, so that, that, any other question, any questions about the video surveillance system before I move into our inspections?
Just that news, we didn't have that kind of coverage at like the elementary schools, right?
No, no.
We had that at the high school, but...
Yeah, the high school is always where we have added more and more cameras over the years. We added more cameras at the middle schools these, this year. The elementary schools, we still have only external cameras, but frankly, we've not really needed much more than that. We just don't have a lot of, you know, altercations or things going on in the hallways that we would want to have cameras on our, on our little ones, so. But we do have those cameras on the playfields and the parking lots and the secured entries.
Ann, will we, will we, or have we seen, will there be any impact to like insurance premiums when we're talking about cost, now that we have better surveillance and reporting and whatnot? Does that have any positive impact for us on insurance?
It does not, unfortunately. But I, I would also like to mention that our insurance pool provided us with a grant and beefed up the funding for this project. So we, we applied for a risk management grant from the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool, and they provided us with an additional hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So while we may not receive a discount, I think we could probably take that off of next year's premiums. So moving on to jurisdictional inspections, a lot of folks don't realize just how many of these inspections go on over the summer months, and there are a lot of them. The Carson City Environmental Health Department comes through, and they have a checklist that they're looking at. The Carson City Fire Department comes through, and they're looking for fire code violations. They also want to see records of our fire alarm systems, our fire sprinkler systems, and our kitchen hood systems having all been inspected and serviced, as well as the fire extinguishers. And then we also have State of Nevada inspections on the boilers and the elevators. So that's what a lot of my summer is spent doing, is meeting with these folks and getting these inspections completed. The Health Department, they're looking at our playgrounds, just the general building condition, roof, walls, foundation. They want to look at the classrooms, whether or not we have overcrowding, lighting, ventilation, heating, sewage, waste disposal, overall maintenance and cleaning, the adequacy of our lavatories, showers, drinking, drinking facilities, kitchens. So they really kind of do a full walkthrough of the building. Very pleased this year to, to let you know that we had no write-ups on any of our sites past all of our environmental health inspections with flying colors, and almost every inspection had a comment about what a good job the custodians were doing, so just to let you know about those ones.
You should let the custodians know too, that they're doing a great job.
Yeah. Fire department inspections. The most common fire code violations include the use of extension cords, connecting one extension cord to another one to achieve your desired length, small appliances plugged into extension cords, excessive flammable material on the walls, and the use of multi-plug adapters. So this is something that goes on every year, and every year we have a number of fire code violations at nearly every site. We work with our facilities maintenance crews and custodial staff to eliminate those fire codes. Fire inspector comes back through a few weeks later, and we're usually all clear. This year, we decided to give staff a little bit more information and guidance. You may recall at the beginning of my presentation, I was talking about some of the supports that we've been developing for our site safety committees. So giving them some bulletins, some written guidance on how they can help us avoid these fire code violations. So during our new hire training this year, we had a brief little presentation on fire code violations, and I won't take you through the whole presentation, but just to give you like maybe four or five of the slides that were included in that presentation. We showed them, for instance, these, these are fire code violations, the multi-plug adapter, the extension cord intended for residential use, and then our favorite item, the surge strip, which is allowed, but we can't plug anything else into it. So we like those surge strips. And then explaining to them what daisy chaining looks like when you take a surge strip and plug it into a surge strip, overloaded surge strips, appliances that are plugged into extension cords and stacked on top of one another, this, this isn't an ideal situation. And then space heaters, those are always a challenge, especially in the winter months. And, you know, we, we have rooms where they need a space heater, but we want to make sure that that space heater is plugged into the wall, that it's kept three feet from combustible materials and equipped with an automatic shut-off. So these are some of the best practices that we're sharing this year as we provide some of those supports to our site safety committees, asking that they please do some walk-arounds periodically in their buildings and be aware of these things and keep an eye out for them. We can't catch them all, but it is the site safety committees that are there in their buildings. They should be conducting periodic safety inspections along with their monthly drills. Okay, any questions about our, our safety inspections?
So, you know, I was involved in, I guess, a teacher complaint that kind of had gone around and around, and it seems like there's an increased level of vigilance. And so I think that what I would recommend is probably in addition to sharing that information with the safety committees, also ensuring that your veteran teachers are getting that same training as the new hires, because I think that there's some information that there's prob, there's some misinformation that I had heard, and then there's some information that they probably need. And then the other thought I have is just from working in two of the older schools in the district, a lot of those teachers are using those power shifts because there isn't adequate power supplies for all of our technology and classrooms, and I'm thinking Seelager Elementary School, Fritsch Elementary School. And so when we're looking at infrastructure, we might want to look at increasing those outlets for those classrooms.
Absolutely. So one of the items that has been prepared for the, to be shared out to staff is this classroom electrical safety bulletin, and it talks specifically about that lack of power receptacles and, and what, what your solutions are. Yeah. So we'll be helping get that information out to the, to the veteran staff members. And I was actually asked to attend a staff meeting at Fritsch last week and shared that information out. And I think we did have a lot of teachers, veteran staff, that were just unaware that these were fire codes. So that's important for them to know that. So when we got all finished with our inspections, we moved right along to implementing our new CPR training program here at the school district. We are required by statute to develop a CPR plan and to train our employees in CPR. Our own regulation, I believe it's Regulation 240, talks about how we go about doing that and who's tasked with what and so forth. So the Safety Services Department this year has looked at all of the different CPR programs that are used within the district, and we had, we had a number of them. Some folks were doing their training online, some folks were ASHE instructors, some folks had Red Cross cards, and we were purchasing training materials through different departments from different sources. And it just made sense to kind of standardize that right across the board and really try to create a team of in-house CPR instructors, people who are willing to volunteer to be CPR instructors and do that on behalf of the district. So that is what we have done, and we have partnered, entered into an agreement with REMZA down in Reno, and we are now a Licensed American Heart Association Training Center. The district is. The district employees that are required by NRS to be trained in CPR include all of these folks listed here, and these are primarily your, your PE teachers, your laboratory teachers, special education, career and technical teachers working in welding, health occupations, manufacturing, coaches, the athletics department. Anybody serving on its site emergency response team is also required to be certified in CPR. When you count up all of these folks, we have nearly four hundred people within the district that are required by NRS to be certified in CPR. That's a good number of people, and it just makes sense to have a standardized training program that we can make available to all of them. So we are now, as I said, an American Heart Association Training Center. We currently have four licensed instructors who are volunteering on behalf of the district, and we will have three more by the end of October. And all three of those are coming from our Transportation Department. Mrs. Fletcher, her trainer Scott McKee, and one of their drivers, Eva Reynolds, have us all volunteered to become CPR instructors. The courses are being offered primarily on professional development days, early release days, and we also have the ability to schedule them ad hoc at the sites through an administrator. If they just have a little group of people, say five or six people, and they need for us to come over and do that, we can arrange for that. Thus far, this year, we've trained over a hundred employees in CPR and AED. So we're really, really pleased with this, and I think it's gonna be a successful program that we can, we can sustain for many years.
Those employees that are required to have CPR certification, how long is their certification good for? Is it two years?
Two years.
Three years, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions about, oh, I think, there we go. Yep. So I, we talked about emergency operations, the plan, the last time I presented to you, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on, on the plan and the updates that were made. There were essentially two areas of the plan that had to be updated. We had to include a plan for suicide response, and we also had to make some changes requiring for the, for the drills, the monthly drills. Half of our drills have to be lockdown drills now. And in order to facilitate that, we have created a checklist form for all site administrators to use when they're doing their drills, so that they can notate what kind of drill was performed, what kinds of resources and tools they included, and, and just some of the observations that are made during a drill. So those are the, the things going on with emergency operations. We did have a great day of training on the plan with all of our district administrators on the tenth of this month. We did a full day of training. During breaks, they were able to go outside and learn how to use a fire extinguisher, and I was really surprised at how many of them wanted to go out and do that. We had two guys from Pool Pact here with a little fire tray and the water-infused extinguisher, and we had like just groups of ten, fifteen people at a time going out to learn how to put out a fire. We had tabletop exercises that were performed on a mercury spill, a domestic disturbance, and an earthquake, and all three of those went really well. And as I mentioned... And as I mentioned, the new hires received training on the staff functions in the emergency plan. So that's your drop, cover, and hold, evacuate, lock down, shelter in place, those staff actions that are included in their classroom emergency folders. They received training on that on the 11th. So I think that's just about it for the emergency plan, and I think that concludes my summer of fun. Can I answer any questions? Yeah.
Summer of fun. Do we have any questions from the board?
It was fun.
Just have a question. On your first slide, you've got a name, Ann Wiswell. And who are you? That was your...
I'm Ann Seernow. Thank you. Yes, I was married on April 20th. Yeah. Thank you.
So it was a summer of fun, too.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Thank you. That was a very thorough report, and we appreciate it. Let's go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 10, informational update regarding the use and placement of substitute teachers in schools in the Carson City School District. For discussion only, Dr. Jose Delfin.
Hi, good evening, everybody, President Crossman, staff. I just want to share a story with you that when Kevin Kearns left his position, and left, she's going to miss this story, I cut up an extension cord. It was a three footer. Every like six inches, I spliced it and then did the electrical nuts on him, and I tied doorstops every six inches because that was his pet peeve, too, and I made a big necklace for him. So that was his going, he was speechless when I gave him that, and rightfully so. It was not something you expected. So I'm here to report with regard to Item 10, the whole discussion about substitute teachers and how we use staff when those occurrences happen, when we don't have enough subs. So in your packets, tried to explain it to you as far as what we do. So basically, here's the drill. It's usually flu season, and our subs are sick, our teachers are sick, people are calling in last minute, and we had situations that occurred a couple of years ago where, you know, we just didn't have any subs at that point to dole out. None to be found. So typically, in secondary, you have teachers that are on different preps that can cover another colleague's classroom, and they get paid that extra hourly duty. But in the elementary school setting, there really wasn't a mechanism for that. So I kind of worked and collaborated with the OCEA, and in your packet, you kind of saw a little example of my memo, which is the exact memo I shared with a staff at the elementary level, and I use me as an example, as a kindergarten teacher, which is laughable, Mr. Cassiope, because I would never survive that. But basically, after some collaboration with OCEA and elementary school staff, I said, what would be fair? What would make sense? Because if we've got everybody, let's say, all the TOCs are on classrooms, the admin are trying to cover classes, what else do we do? Because we've got to be able to take care of kids. We can't leave kids unsupervised at any given time. So this was kind of the Band-Aid, if you will, or the try-to-fix-it solution for some of those elementary classrooms that were covering for each other. And basically, this was a teacher-driven solution, to be honest with you, because I was trying to figure out what was going to be fair for everybody at the elementary level. So that's the memo I sent out over a year ago, and it seems to have worked. I know there were a few schools that probably suffered more in subs. Sealeger would probably be one of them. But I didn't hear many other, in fact, I talked to those teachers personally. I said, yeah, I feel your pain. How do you want me to handle this? You know, if the TOCs are out, your SFA facilitator at the time is gone, or they're covering classes, and your VP is covering classes, then what do we do? So there really isn't a perfect solution for this situation when there are no subs. I know that, you know, it's a burden, but, you know, at the same time, we've got to balance out student safety and well-being with what we can do. So hence that memo. And also, for your reading pleasure, gave you some stats on substitutes, and I know that may spark some interest of discussion as well. So here to take any questions you may have.
Questions, Mr. Trustee Walker.
So the teachers I talked with, so they were elementary teachers, and they were appreciative of the additional pay for that time. So they did mention that. I think that their concern was that, from what they were told, was that the instructional coaches could not sub. And so I think that in the memo and whatever that you've provided, it says that, you know, all hands on deck. And basically, I think that's my concern, is like you said, student safety.
Right.
And if we have a coach at Gleese, and they might have to put their planning on hold for a day because we're short on subs, I mean, I would expect that that's kind of one of the options on the table. And I think that's what prompted the teachers to contact me. And so I think that we just need to emphasize that it truly is all hands on deck when we don't have the bodies for these classrooms.
Mr. Walker, that's a great point, and, you know, you and I have been school administrators, and we really leave it up to those individuals to kind of determine who goes where. And, you know, I've subbed as a VP in a classroom or as a principal, as a teacher, so I've done it at all levels. So it really depends on that school site administration and what they're doing, what deadlines they may have. I mean, I really can't go in there and say, well, you know, drop everything you're doing in place of everything else. I mean, I just don't have that kind of sense of what their order of importance for that day, but, you know...
And I just want to clarify, and I'm not expecting that, you know, I know that that's a site administrator call, but it's a concern that was brought by a group of teachers, and that's why I'm bringing it up. And I think that, I don't think there's an easy solution to the issue, and I think that it's something we truly do, all have to work together. And I think that there needs to be more communication between administration and the teachers, because if they feel like they're being heard, I feel like that's going to alleviate a lot of the pressure. And I think that a secondary concern that was raised by every teacher that was in the room was the fact that when you add in, you know, six, seven kids to an elementary classroom, especially at those primary grades, it really disrupts the learning. And so there's a real fear that that was going to work against them in their teacher evaluation system. And so I think that in addition to kind of opening the communication lines, it's also talking with teachers about, you know, this isn't going to count against you, and maybe working with the teachers' union and figuring out what those concerns are and how the district office and the teachers can kind of find a solution for that.
Okay, got it.
I've got a question, Jose, and probably not for you, but for AJ. What did we, what was the increase that we approved for substitute teachers in this last budget cycle?
Per day, I think.
Per day. So the, in the, there wasn't an increase in this current year we're in. In that previous year, it was an increase, the daily rate went from 90 to, I can't remember when it was hourly, I remember it was 90 to basically, I think it's just over $100 a day, so it's for seven and a half hours of work by our contract, that's what we consider it. And that number was really generated looking at comparable districts in the area. I think that last year, that $100 put us basically tied for second place. I think the only district that paid more was Story County, I think paid $105 a day. For long-term, it was 100...
20.
120? I was thinking it was a little more than that, but, okay, so right around there.
Okay, if the pay is kind of in line with other districts, do we have an adequate supply of subs? No, given, you know, it's not the flu season, but do we have an adequate supply?
You know, I don't think I could ever stand here and say we have an adequate supply. I wish we had triple of what we have, because we share them with all the districts. So, you know, folks can opt to sub here or down in Douglas or Washoe Valley or even in Mayan County. So we all share the same subs, unfortunately or fortunately. Some, we have a core, a group of 30 or 40 that just sub in Carson, but for the most part, they're freelancers, they can go wherever they want. And, you know, that's kind of the way of the world with regard to subs. And it is a sub shortage. So I have not closed the application for substitutes ever, you know. I may have in maybe five years ago or so, but from that point where I knew that subs were becoming part of our race to the top, you know, five years ago, I kept those sub apps open. So we're continuing to take in more subs. I've actually utilized the emergency sub form for the Department of Ed, and those are the people that don't have the required 60 hours of college credit to be able to be a sub. And as long as they have a high school degree and, you know, they pass all the background stuff, we can issue emergency licenses. So I know. And so we're to that point where I've signed up a dozen of those people, so...
I mean, I would hope that those weren't the people we put in the place of a teacher in a classroom.
Oh, no, no. These are folks that are coming in as regular subs.
And I have one other question. Is there, I had a retired teacher friend tell me that she had stopped subbing in Carson because there was a requirement that they had to do like 30 days or, I don't know what. There was a certain number of days a month that they needed to do. Is that...
Yeah, a couple of days a month I require to still be in practice, but...
So two days a month?
Yeah, two days a month, but there's a lot of gray. I mean, if they work with my staff and they say, you know, I'm going to be out on vacation, I'm not going to be able to sub this month, not a big deal. But we had folks that we would, in the past, keep on the books and would sub once in the fall, then once in the spring, and nothing in between. So I wanted them to be at least active. But if they're extenuating circumstances, we definitely work with them.
And if I could just add, for a brand-new retiree, they're required to stay out for 90 days prior to going back. The school district can have 60 of those days waived, so they still have to wait a 30-day period of time before they can officially come back and go to work.
So do you think it's a money issue, or it's just not experienced people?
I think it's tough to be a sub. I don't think it's for everybody. I think we've all had subs in our lifetimes, and it's not always a perfect situation. So I can tell you, it's not for the faint-hearted. So I think we can throw money at it, but it doesn't mean we're going to get great quality. So, you know, we, meaning the HR department, in the past, along with Kerry Pryor, who's one of our lead trainers, have offered courses with four subs to be able to do classroom management, follow lesson plans, and, you know, how to do the right thing, kind of thing. And we've had great success. Again, those are the core people that hang out in Carson mostly. But for the most part, you know, I got to tell you, we, as HR people, we complain about the same things, about subs that are reading newspapers in classrooms, that are just passing out word searches and things that really aren't going to be very beneficial. Now, you know, our teachers are very savvy in our district where, you know, there are some lesson plans to be followed. Race to the Top subs were trained specifically for Race to the Top. So we made a lot of attempts in our department to work with ed services and our PD trainers to ensure that we have quality subs up there. But, you know, when a brand-new sub comes into our district, I have no idea how they're doing until I have a complaint, to be honest with you. And then I've got to roll in and say, what happened? But for the most part, yeah. I mean, the subs that we've had as veteran substitutes are doing a pretty good job, I think.
And then just piggybacking on Mike's question, is that reflected in their evaluation that they have been taking extra kids? Do you know?
I have not heard that from any of my administrators with regard to teacher evaluations. I haven't, but...
I think the concern was that, looking at the student test results, and so what the teachers were reporting was that it was happening very frequently, like sometimes more than once a week. So the teachers we were meeting with were feeling like they weren't able to adequately do their jobs effectively, and that's what they were concerned about.
Understood. Yeah. I don't think our admin would fail a teacher, if you will, whatever that means, because they're trying to take care of kids that are maybe this place that day. I just can't see our administrative staff punishing anyone for taking in kids. And don't get me started about test results, so that's a whole different subject.
I know, but it's a reality for the teachers, and so it's something we need to think about. I mean, and I think maybe one of the things we should do now that we're in the beginning of the year is maybe each of our schools could track how many days a class is being displaced and where those kids are going to kind of see if there is an impact on test results, so that the teachers kind of feel like they're being heard.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, because I think that's part of it. And I'm looking at the elementary plan and hoping that that's not a regular occurrence to have, just for that many bodies in one room, when you add that many extra, it does really disrupt it. So I hope that that's a more rare occurrence when we're really short of subs.
So can I ask if it was one particular school? Was it five teachers? Was it all of the district that you got complaints from, Mr. Walker?
Well, it was one particular school. There was several teachers that had, they invited Trustee Green and myself, and that was basically the crux of the meeting, is that it was happening so often. And then the secondary complaint was that there were a lot of really explosive behaviors that they had no support for. And so it's kind of, those were the two things that they were kind of throwing their hands in the air and saying, and, you know, and I knew these teachers well, and I knew most of them weren't teachers that I had ever even heard complain about the job, so for perspective.
Got it. Thank you.
Mine just happened to be during Reading Week when I was there, and it happened, and I couldn't, I asked what was going on, because there were so many more people in this one group, and so that's where I got my concern.
Okay.
And Jose, I'd just, to agree with Mr. Walker, last year, I visited three schools, and that was kind of an ongoing concern of teachers. So, I mean, there's enough out there to where it seems to be happening across the board. And it's just, like you said, it's not an ideal situation with an ideal solution, but it's out there, and they're feeling the pain.
Gotcha.
Let me ask a question. With your statistics you provided...
Yeah.
That comes up to over 2,000 days of teacher absences in which there probably should be a, I assume there was a sub of some kind, or not. But is that a typical year?
So this is the first time I've published these numbers with regard to subs. So ask away, Mr. Swarzak. I know I threw a lot of numbers up there. So a couple thousand, are you talking about all of them added together roughly?
Yeah, I just, I added all of them together.
Right, okay.
So they have 2,000.
I think that you missed this page.
Oh, no, there's a...
You missed that page.
Oh, gosh.
It actually comes up to, yeah, that's just in PD. It comes up to 5,800, so...
That even more, you know, at least in this next question, it's something you just said. We don't, or we don't have a process to chuck you, maybe, on a sub unless you get a complaint? We don't have no monitoring system in place to go in and see if they are just reading papers or what goes on?
So, good question about that. I did develop a form where if I received a complaint, I wanted something in writing. So I developed a form by which a teacher who might have walked into a classroom or administrator might have walked into Jose's, you know, me as a sub, and catch me reading a newspaper. You know, it was one thing to hear the complaints, and it was one thing to actually have somebody write a statement down. So I did develop a... So, I did develop a form, and I re-sent it out to all administrators this year as well so that I could track who is doing what. So, similar to what Cherie was talking about, if a sub has one complaint and it's been validated by an adult, whether it's a teacher or administrator or both, I have them write the complaint down, and I typically put it back on the shoulders of the admin to see if they could tackle that situation because they were there. But if they can't, I let my staff know that, hey, I received a complaint about Jose and his subbing. He had his feet up, newspaper out, et cetera. So, we call that sub, and we actually show them the form and why that complaint was brought up, and they have to kind of give me a rationale why they were doing that. And so, it depends on the egregiousness of that situation. If, for some reason, you know, that sub was harming any kids at any given time, they're definitely out of our district. I usually have that talk with them. But if it's something as slight as, you know, they were not keeping the class in order, classroom management wasn't there, there's a lot of yelling and screaming, you know, I usually say, "All right, but we've got to get this handled." You know, "We were ensuring our safety and security of our kids with you, so please work with X, Y, and Z to look at classroom management." So, I've worked with administrators, I've worked with some of our ISs on occasion, and just make sure they pop in that classroom for the next time, or refer them right to an IS. So, and some of that works to some degree, and then some subs take to it, and they take it to heart, they take all the classes that we offer, and some don't. So, typically, if, I have three infractions of very minimal nature within that same semester or year, I usually have a talk with them, either via phone or face-to-face, and say, "Look, it's not working. I know you've got lots of choices. You know, there's Douglas, there's Lyon, there's Washoe."
And you know, and I mean, I would just say that in every school I've worked in, there's a procedure in place when you have a sub, the administrators, and usually all of the administrators in the building at least pick a time they're going to walk by and check out the classroom. But I think that with the increasing numbers of absences and teaching vacancies, I think that maybe that's something to talk about with the site administrators and really upping the amount of supervision that's taking place when we have substitutes in the classroom just for those reasons. Because, I mean, I think we don't want to necessarily wait till we have three complaints or whatever. We want to make sure that we kind of nip that right away.
Right. And if I get a serious complaint the first time and I don't have any corroboration, if you will, it's just a statement, I'll put that sub on hold, if you will, until they talk to me. It really depends on each situation. So, I don't completely get them out of our system, but I at least try to understand what happened in that situation. But they are blocked, if you will, until further notice upon speaking with me or the administrator in charge.
Just one last question.
Sure.
If I'm a teacher, then, knowing all the things that are going on with evaluations, can I, as a teacher, if I know a sub that I want, can I request that sub to be my?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. They all have their favorites. Yep, yep.
The problem comes from the good ones.
Exactly.
They usually want the same ones.
Right. The good ones are picked up pretty quickly, and they do become our long-term subs.
And I think, and you know, and also, in this district, we have a lot of really good subs.
We do.
We really have a lot of good subs. And so, I mean, I want to make sure to say that because a lot of our schools are really relying on these people. So, I think they are quality people for the most part.
And I would agree. I had a kind of interesting situation when I was principal at a different district. A new sub come into my building and didn't follow the lesson plan, and she decided to go to the local grocery store and pick up chicken wings and do dissection early in the year. The problem was, it was never in the lesson plan. Chicken wings were on the floor, in the sink, up in the ceiling, in between books. Yeah. So, I little chat as a principal with this new sub, and I said, "So, how did you decide to, you know, decide to go to, you know, this grocery store and pick up chicken wings?" And she goes, "Wow, I just wanted to engage the kids." Well, they were fully engaged. They had not practiced safety knife, scalpel practices. It was a biology class, she thought it'd be cool to do something fun. I said, "No, not today." I let her go home. Yeah, I don't know. I had the same look, Mr. Corine, when I talked to her, it's like, "Wow, all right."
In those instances, in when it's all hands-on deck in elementary schools, do you sometimes utilize the specialist or the specials teachers? Is that an option for them to cancel specials that day and fill them in? I don't know.
Yeah, I think they have been. It's a tricky situation because we don't want to do that too much either because that burns about, they handle all the kids all the time. So, it really is up to that site administrator to make the best decision at that time. Hopefully, it won't be as bad this year, Mr. Walker, and you won't get as many complaints. I mean, I'm crossing my fingers.
Well, and I think that, I mean, just for the teacher's sake and the student's sake, I think that we need to make sure that we do everything in our power to make that as rare as possible because I think that the thought is, elementary's kind of easy to do that, to break a class up and, "Oh, we're just going to add four kindergartners into this class" or "Five second graders." But that can be quite a difference when you're teaching a lesson, and the impacts when you look at this over the course of a year could really be great.
Right. And I appreciate that, and I know that was a topic of discussion when I talked to the Seliger, I called them Seliger Five when I had a chat with them, and so, I heard them. I do want you to notice that the numbers that I gave you, if you divided that by five hundred teachers roughly, that's what you might come up with as an average. So, if you look at the school business of staff development and look at that with about five hundred teachers, that's about three to four days of PD for each teacher. So, it may seem like a large number, but, you know, we did, I did do a couple regressions. Last year, we had, that number was two thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-three. The year before that was two thousand, if I can read my own writing, roughly about twenty-four-hundred. So, we've been lessening the amount of PD days as Race to the Top has waned as well. So, we're hoping to see the decrease in numbers over time. And if you look at sick days, you know, they're not abusing it. That's, if you divide that by five hundred roughly, it's about two something, two to three days per teacher. That's not bad. So, just keep that in mind as I use these numbers over time, that we're looking at teaching staff. And probably, you know, as a good measure, new hires definitely get a lot more training than the vets do. So, they're out doing a lot of things just to make sure they're supported, that, you know, they know what the NEPF is, they know what to expect in classrooms, and give them the proper training that they deserve and ask for, actually.
Do we have any other questions on this or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Delfin. We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 11, informational update to define the fiscal impact of providing employee benefits to school social workers for discussion only. Dr. Jose Delfin.
Well, I thank Mr. Stokes for this agenda item. I came back from break, and he told me I had to do this one without Mr. Fueling either. So, this is the best I could do at the time that I put this together. So, I based these numbers out of sixteen social workers. I talked to Dave before the meeting, and he said, "There's really only fourteen social workers." There are twelve. Dave, come on up here, and you can explain it better than I can.
Thank you.
Which I can adjust the numbers, yeah.
It was on the fly again, for the record, Dave Clario. Dr. Delfin is correct. We have sixteen school social workers, but fourteen full-time positions. So, I have twelve who are full-time and four who are students that are working on their Masters of Social Work, and they each work twenty. So, we have fourteen full-time positions, just for the...
Yeah, thank you for that. So, that range is, I recalc'd it while I was sitting there, listening to everybody. So, what you, I hope, asked for was, what will it take to employ social workers at sixteen? And those numbers arrived at about a million dollars for the low end, if we looked at that range, and up to about one-point-five. But after adjusting those numbers, I just did that math quickly. It's about nine-hundred thousand if they were on the lower end of the teacher pay scale now, and that's something I'm forgetting here as I look at my bullet points, that when I researched this last week, Washoe and Clark employ their social workers on the teacher's salary schedule. So, it wouldn't make sense for us to do anything differently because if we didn't do that, our social workers would just go up to Washoe. So, to be competitive, I based it on those figures, hence why the teacher's salary schedule was there for your, you know, review. So, on the good side, we are starting at forty K. We are leading the state in that for now. Hopefully, the other districts are slow to catch up. And on the high end is sixty-eight thousand as a seasoned teacher. So, that's why you have that low range and high range of those social workers. So, if you want to replace, instead of sixteen social workers with fourteen, that range now is roughly nine-hundred thousand to one-point-four million. So, it just changed a little bit. And if we were just to pay for their benefits and split-fund them, if you will, and I'll have Mr. Fueling talk about that, then the range would not be thirty-five, three-hundred-thousand, five-hundred-and-four, that number, to four-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand. Instead, the range would be three-hundred-and-nine-thousand or three-hundred-and-ten-thousand K to four-hundred-and-twenty-seven K. So, it just lowers it a little bit if we just did benefits. So, that's kind of the cost of it, and, Mr. Fueling, if you don't mind, kind of chatting about how we do those funds? You're better at that.
I just have a quick question. So, I think that, number one, I mean, it sounds like we're kind of filling the gap with some student, some pre-service social workers, it sounds like. But I think that if we're looking at moving forward, and this is something we're going to hire, we're probably going to want to aim for sixteen because we're going to want to hire, you know, we want to fully staff our program.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Walker. Yes, to answer your question, yes, I would say one variable is that most of my school's social workers, although they're full-time, most of them are very young. They, most are not married, do not have children, so maybe they feel that they can operate at that age and feel good about no benefits. However, I am losing some good qualified ones because of that. So, yeah, I think, the only other thing I'll comment on is, I think, and again, Mr. Fueling will know this much better than I, the benefit package should be the same, but the base salary could be different because I have some who are clinicians, who have a clinical degree and whose license allows them to do more, i.e. psychotherapy. And then, I have some at the bachelor's level that are making a lot less, so I know we'd have to kind of work in the comparability that way as well, so...
Good evening, Trustee. It's Andrew Fueling for the record. So, the, one of the options that we are tentatively looking at for this, because the state has interest in districts like us taking on these as our own employees instead of being kind of contractors. So, the grant that is awarded from the state right now, I don't know that the legislature has any intent to increase funding for social workers. I think they like the results, but they, there's only so much money to go around. So, you know, at this point, it's essentially paying for salaries only. The state has approached us, and we had a meeting with a representative from the state, myself, Mrs. Kima, Jan Albertson from Student Support Services, her Medicaid specialist, Rosella Jordan, and Mr. Clario was there to discuss basically getting reimbursed by Medicaid for the services that social workers provide. And we're still trying to, Medicaid is rather complicated, and there are different, I can't think of the terminology, but there's different ways to provide services, and depending on how you provide them, you get reimbursed at different rates. So, one of the ways is in a, they call it a clinic setting, which is an easier setting to provide service and get reimbursement, but your reimbursement rates aren't as great. There's a situation kind of like we do now. We do get reimbursed by Medicaid right now for some special education services, for speech and language services, physical therapy and occupational therapy. All of those contractors and employees, they keep logs of the students they're serving, and depending if, on any given time, if they would qualify, on a daily basis, really, you need to look to see if that student or family would qualify for Medicaid or be eligible for Medicaid, then we can get reimbursed by Medicaid from the federal government. So, it's not real clean, but it's a possibility. We think that the reimbursement rate may be enough to cover the cost of benefits. So, I guess the bigger picture is what we're trying to find out, and we still need to gather more information, is if we were able to, we would be able to get that grant from the state to cover salaries and then be able to get reimbursed from Medicaid for the cost of benefits by split-funding, we could actually bring all of those social workers onboard as our own employees. So, it's a little complicated, but I think in the bigger picture, with a lot of the success that we've seen from the social workers is something we're actively pursuing, trying to figure out a way to bring them on as our own staff. But it's, there's not a real straightforward answer just yet. That's the best answer we have. That's the state, the answer that the state is trying to promote or have us at least research to find out.
So, if we did it that way, would we have to have another person on staff to do the Medicaid part?
That's a good question. I don't believe so. I, the, actually, the person we have right now is a veteran in dealing with Medicaid billing and that sort of thing. So, and she's actually been really helpful in helping us try to guide us through this conversation. So, with sixteen or fourteen or whatever the number is additional workers, when I was speaking with her earlier today about it, she didn't think that it really was that, if we would bill in the same way that we do now for our special education employees, it wouldn't be that big of a deal for her. So, that was heartening to hear. But again, we definitely need to learn a little bit more about it.
Well, and I think that we'd also want to probably talk to, like, one of the biggest complaints you hear from our speech pathologists is inputting that information for Medicare. So, I mean, I think that's going to add a significant amount of work to our social workers' caseload also. And I have a secondary question, I think, for Mr. Delfin. And so, we have a number of contractors, and so, I mean, I'm concerned about the optics of saying, "We're going to give this segment of our contractors benefits, but not our speech pathologists or behavioral psychologists," or, you know what I mean? We have a number of people that operate as contractors, and I'm not sure that, I think we're kind of opening the door for something here.
That's a great Kivo cab for the eclipse optics. I like it. So, with regard to contractors, I know some of the ones that we use out of special ed are contracting with a lot of folks, not, maybe a lot, but not just with our school district, but with other school districts. So, they're licensed enough, they know what the lay of the land is, that they're not going to get benefits, but the contract covers a little bit more than just salary so that they can, if they want to purchase their own. I'm not an expert on that, Mr. Walker, just so you know. That would be a Director Albertson kind of question, but I see where the perception might be. We're offering something to some groups, and, yeah, I mean, that definitely is a concern. But it really depends on our priorities, I think, as an educational institution. What do we do with our funding and our budget and be able to carve out the best amount of funding, if you will, for what we need for kids? So, I don't have a great answer for you there. I just know that the contractors who we've had for a long time, they're not, I know... I just know that the contractors who we've had for a long time, they're not, I know a couple, they're not poor. Let me just say it out loud, they're okay, they're going to be fine. But I don't know all of them. I know there's some organizations that we deal with that are agencies versus just a single person. That would be another agenda item, if you wanted to delve deeper on that. I'm certainly not an expert. But for this agenda item, for social workers, this was, I guess, asked by one of you to kind of bring up today, so...
Okay, I've got a question. Let's go back, we had a state grant...
Okay.
...for social workers in schools.
Right.
What was the purpose of that? Was it just for the social, emotional learning part of this, or was it beyond that? Because I would disagree with what, you know, and not, I would take the other side. I don't, I think this is a special group, that there was some state guidance coming in. But let's start with that. Why were the social workers in the first place were, was funding, you know, granted for that purpose? What was the purpose?
So glad Dave is still here.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll do my best on that. The purpose was, this is a unique grant, it's a state grant that was established by the legislature and then they charged the Department of Education to oversee. The monies distribute them, but that's and set guidelines. I would, I think that over years, the legislators were tired of the bullying problem that was going on in schools. They were shocked when there was more violence in the schools, the school shootings, other school violence, and then also that Nevada was just amongst a handful of states that did not employ school social workers and just said, you know, we just can't sit back and ignore this. So, I think that was a key part, some of those that I mentioned.
And I think the governor was really backing it, too.
Absolutely. And Mrs. Sandoval as well.
Right.
She is a huge child supporter, child services. But I think that's what it was.
Okay. And then, so going forward, and we talked earlier about the tracking of, you know, of what's happened, you know, within our district and I'm sure other districts, so we go back to the legislature with, there's results. You know, it's not just talk, it's, you know, real. That's why I think that we ought to take a look at this. You know, social, emotional learning and every facet that is related to that, you know, the emotion, aggressive kids or whatever, students, it's more than that. Bullying, it's all. I mean, this is, that's why I'm saying our policy, that is a powerful policy that we just adopted tonight. And when we get down to benefits, I would ask AG and Stacy, I'll pick up on you, I mean, this will continue into our budget cycle because it's not going to go away. Are there any other funding sources for social workers, just say, just for the social, emotional learning part? Are there private sources out there? This is important and have we exhausted all those avenues?
I would say at this point, we don't know the extent of what is available. Just on the surface, on the very, very surface, it would be a general fund item to pay for the benefits. Are there other grants available? There certainly may be. It seems as though private grants aren't quite as often available to fund positions, especially multiple positions or something like that. As much as social, emotional learning has, I guess, the awareness of it has grown over time, there very well may be something like that, but we definitely haven't fully exhausted that search for that at all.
Okay. All right. As we move forward, this is not going away. So, let's set out to find out what may be available, what arguments we would make to our, at the next legislative session, as the value of what was started. We're talking about student achievement and success in life, and it seems to me that the social workers, based upon what we were even told here, they came forward, they're on target. And should they go away? Should we ignore it? No. We need to find a way to fund this. And Jose, you made some deal about, you know, getting together with OCEA or whatever. And if we keep on student achievement and success in life, I mean, that's what OCA and the certified teachers, I think we, let's take a look at all of that. Let's bring everybody to the table to say, this is a value and a tremendous value. I mean, there's a lot of students out there. We look at our demographics, we look at what's going on over the years. We had a recap of the disciplinary problems. I don't know. I look at this in terms of, and what I've seen with, you know, just talking to some of the kids, that, you know, the, just being accepted as a student means a lot. Accepted as a person means a lot towards academic achievement. And I think that's where the social workers are coming in. And that's why, you know, this peer-to-peer connection to help with what's going on here, that just means, that just means a lot. And I just, this is, all I'm trying to say is it's not going away, we need to exhaust everything. And Jose, you brought back the initial information and now we have to find a way to make this happen.
You know, Mr. Swirzick, you bring up a good point. When I started teaching, when the dinosaurs roamed, there were a lot of two-parent families. That is a rare commodity anymore. You know, we have a lot of single parents that are raising families, foster care. We have homeless kids, as you've heard. We've got all kinds of situations where grandparents and/or uncles or aunts or friends of the family are guardians. It's a whole different atmosphere in education than when I started. So, we are facing a lot more anger management in students, a lot of custody battles between parents or guardians. We now have same-sex marriage. I mean, you can think of all kinds of combinations of parenting and guardians that were not around when I started in education. So, I'm with you. I think you're preaching to the choir that we, as a community, have tried to do our best as an educational institution to try to take care of every single student that we have that comes through the doors as best as we can. And it's great to have our SSPs in the fold to help us with those coping skills because truly, none of us in education got our degrees in social working. I mean, we do it because out of the kindness of our heart, we listen to kids, we listen to parents, we try to do the best we can in conflict resolution, every situation, but it is a crisis, it's a national crisis. And I don't have a great answer, but yeah, everybody who can help as a partner with us certainly is a great addition.
Now, like I said about the policy, that, with the demographics, with the students, that sense of belonging is important and that the issue of hope, I mean, you described a lot of things. A lot of kids come in with not feeling that hope. We see kids with, you know, even though we have the learning guys where the grades are not, you know, they're not making it and we haven't provided support. When Richard and others provided the disciplinary things and the aggressive behaviors, most of those kids were failing. And that's where we need this coming in to, I don't know, that sense of belonging and hope for kids. I think we have the mechanism in place here with the social workers. And I think that's, it's not a perfect world, but I think we're going to get a whole lot of these kids that we wouldn't ordinarily get.
Well, and piggybacking on you, that's what we're saying. NASB was down there testifying, we had different groups down there, but it's a legislative thing that has to become aware of what it is. The other problem we're going to be looking at, though, is that the governor can't run again. And he has been a big proponent about these social workers and the demands. So, you're really going to have to start looking, when we get into an election cycle, that's one of the questions you should be asking these candidates, is how important is this to your agenda? How do you feel about this? Because that should be how you vote, because that's going to make a big difference. If you don't have that leadership, half of, that stuff wouldn't have gotten done. He has, you know, he's the governor, put it in his budget. It's hard to take stuff out if it's in the governor's budget. It's easier to have it put in or taken out than it is to put it in. So, what I'm saying is we have to, as a board, especially since we're in Carson City, we need to be active at that and we need to be hearing and we need to get the parents that this affects. It has more emphasis when the parents go down there and they talk to their legislators instead of a school board or NASB or any of those. If we can organize those parents to go down and tell the legislators how important this is and how it affects our community and our society, that's how we keep those going. If we can add benefits, great. But like Ron said, it would be great to look at another source because we hate depending on the legislature. I mean, you, mostly because you never know what you're going to have, you know, and we don't know what we're going to have either. So, if we can look at other ways to fund this, that would be great, if there's other grants out there or whatever, instead of doing the legislature. Because in two years, when he's not the governor, I'm really nervous and scared of how a lot of the educational matters are going to get taken care of.
Well, going forward, it's going to be a budgetary matter. I mean, I'm not dictating it, but it's got to be in the mix.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, so all of us can discuss this going forward. But we need to start the information gathering today, going forward, and I just think we're going to make it happen, so.
I think, can I add real quick? I think everything that I heard, I agree with. I mean, the social workers are critical. We've seen amazing value. You know, when I think back, when I first came on the board, the big conversation was counselors. And what I heard at the time was, you know, I'm paraphrasing, but don't really have money to support it, their original role that they had, they're not all necessarily, they're being used in other capacities. And so, I think not only is the funding important and finding a way eventually to get away from, to get towards sustainable funding, as opposed to grant funding, like Stacy said, could go away, but finding a way to get some hard funding for it and then making sure we have a work plan in place that dictates not only what they're doing, but what their role is now and into the future so that, you know, it's concrete what these social workers are doing, what we expect of them, so that we, you know, we can track the benefits of it and maybe sell it to the, you know, to the legislature, to the politicians and the folks making the rules on us, that this is important and this is something that needs to be sustained.
It's even more powerful, I think, just to add to the body of conversations, when the kids come up and testify. And then they can kind of, they can say, you know, I lived on the streets, and a lot of them do, and, you know, this helped me get through, the JAG program was built on that. I can't tell you how many stories I've heard as an educator from kids that just make your heart melt and you go, oh, my gosh, what can I do? So, I think that's the key, is to get the kids up in front, along with their guardians or parents, just to see what they're going through that we don't see every day, you know? We're kind of sheltered sometimes.
Well, and this piggybacks on what Ann was saying earlier, when we talk about just school safety and everything. I mean, I've spoken, I can't tell you how many teachers, and I hate to say it's not as surprising as it used to be, but I'm amazed at how many, the different issues these kids are facing. Some kids really don't have parents. They piggyback going back and forth to prison. They piggyback being somewhere other than raising their kids. And these kids need help. And so, without this effort, social workers being part of it, I don't know how these kids have a chance.
Agreed. When I was principal at another district, we were washing clothes for kids because they didn't have washers and dryers. And we were getting them showered in our nurse's office, just to give them a sense of cleanliness. So, that happened when the Great Recession was happening. And I remember thinking, what, you're living in a garage, in a storage unit? How does that happen? I mean, it's just really heart-jerking. But, you know, with this kind of awareness, I think it's important for all of us, as all of you have mentioned, to get out there and get the word out and get as many kids who are courageous enough to tell their story to the legislators to be able to keep supporting everything we can do.
Okay. So, this doesn't get lost and we let it drift. The first meeting in October, maybe you could come back with what's the plan going forward, the purpose and the value of the social, let's start with that, of what we know. We'll find out maybe some other funding sources and we're going to, let's get that planned so we, we're ready to go each step of the way and we'll just update it each month so it doesn't drift.
No drifting. I hear that.
You know, and one of the things I was going to recommend is, for me, just the way this proposal is written, it's not real easy to follow. And so, what I would appreciate is a little bit more of a, here are the options. There's a Plan A, a Plan B, a Plan C, what the bottom line of each of those plans is going to cost. And then, again, I mean, just because I asked a question doesn't mean that I'm against providing benefits for social workers, but if we're going to maintain them as contractors, then we need to look at how we're treating all of our contractors in the district. And so, I think that that's something we need to decide. If we're going to make them employees, then that's, the benefit decision is a little bit different. And so, that's my point.
Exactly. And I think, personally, I think they should be employees, but that's just me. But we're going to get all this data and we're going to bring it together, along with Dave and social workers and the kids. What makes sense? We got student achievement and success in life and we got a large number of kids out there that need this. So, just bring it forward.
Okay. Is that clear as mud?
I think we got it.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Claro.
You gotta keep working.
No, that's it.
No, that's it for him.
No, no, no. I'm entering it forward.
Oh, he's done tonight. We'll go on to Agenda Item 12, approval of the consent agenda for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second that.
Motion by Trustee Wilkie, seconded by Trustee Carini. Do we have any further discussion or public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Agenda Item 13, informational items for discussion only. No action will be taken. Do we have any comments or questions on the informational items?
You know, just to note that there's on Wednesday, September 20th, and Richard, is that right, the next PLC? Under the informational items, on Wednesday, September 20th, Carson High, 6:00?
Trustee Swirzick, that is correct.
Okay.
And so, will Janice's replacement be taking over the family engagement part of it?
Family engagement is actually going to be taken on by Mr. Dan Davis.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments on informational items? Okay. Go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 14, request for future agenda topics. Do we have any at this time? Kind of just had one in the last meeting. Yeah, the last item. Okay. Go ahead and Agenda Item 15, adjournment. This meeting is adjourned.